... Let me take this to the flag. And it states in America, in two of the republics, which is that one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll give you the orders, uh, next to approval of the agenda of Senate.
Don't move.
Second. You may do the jury.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold, get this theory. Uh, minutes from the meeting of March thirty.
I looked through them, they look good, this is Sandy, approved.
Uh, Rick, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold, let's carry. Are there any general public concerns? From anyone?
Peggy, who did you say?
Peggy, do you have any, any information that there would be anybody calling in? On the consumer line?
No, I do not. And I can see from our list, we have our news media on the line, and that's it.
Okay, we have both the newspaper and the radio?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, there are no public concerns, and taking a look at the agenda, it looks like, uh, let's move down to the bottom items, and, uh, look at the discussions and the possible action on the infectious disease action plan for this COVID nineteen. Uh, just if that's the one that we had in our packet, uh, which I need to go grab my copy of, is that correct Peggy?
That's correct.
Okay, let me get my copy of that.
Hey Peggy, I didn't get a copy of that. Well, never mind, it's not, never mind, we, it's under my thing, so. Hopefully, I didn't look under the plaque.
I know that, uh, well, actually, I'm gonna call out Sarah because she actually brought this to my attention, but this, uh, copy, and I don't know what, but, uh, you guys gotta discuss it, uh, amongst yourselves. I read through it, and I just wondered if you and everybody else has to say about it.
Basically, what this is, is just a little bit more clarification. Hey Sandy, or Sandy, I'm sorry, we need you to either speak up or get closer to the mic, I've heard some people comment, you have such a tough voice. Can't believe anybody, other than I have a soft voice.
Um, what this is, is just an extension of, or I should say more clarification, on the, the COVID FMLA. So it just gives a little bit more, um, detail as to, so that everybody, um, in the Humboldt County employees knows exactly what's going on, and how to, um, you know, what the goal of it is, what COVID nineteen is, um, what the action plan is. And then, um, it talks about the emergency, um, paid and sick leave, uh, that employees will be, um, at home, and, um, possibly working from home, um, and it, uh, 'cause it's a new plan that started April one. As you say, uh, it says here on page three, beginning April one, employees are entitled to have paid leave with the following amounts, full-time eighty hours, um, part-time employees, uh, number of hours equal, uh, there are caps on the amount of money, and employee taking this leave may, um, be compensated for from Humboldt County. So it just spells it out really well, and, um, so that's why we had to say it, beginning April one, is because that's when the new COVID, um, FMLA started. Um, it also talks on, let's see where it is, page five, uh, illness reporting, um, it's, it's very, it spells out exactly what they're supposed to do if they do feel ill, um, and then when they can come back. So, um, fever over a hundred, coughing, sneezing, shortness of breath, any flu-like symptoms, uncommon, uh, uncommon symptoms of COVID nineteen include diarrhea, nausea, fatigue, and then it says you may return to work until the later date following one. The first thing is seven days from the onset of symptoms, and number two is, so you have to be up at least seven days, and then you have to be fever-free after those seven days. You know, you could've been fever-free after day four. So if that's three, the seventy-two hours, then you can come back to work on, you know, the eighth day. So it just is a good way to spell things out.
Yeah, it spells out a little more clearer.
Travel, talks about the travel, what needs to be if, if you're traveling, so, 'cause you're not supposed to travel outside, but if you do, you will be, um, fourteen days quarantined. Self, self-isolate, not quarantine, self-isolate, gotta say the right words.
I haven't, I've seen it, but I read it earlier, it says in there, it's a working document, right?
Oh, it's right, yeah, that's right, it, I think it's the first.
So, since we haven't had any of this, we're kinda going down a road where we're...
Correct.
Uh, we're looking, we could change daily.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
From the next meeting to the next, and we have to have something in order to...
Yep.
Become one of the guidelines.
The very first thing, it says this policy, it, you know, is rapidly evolving public health emergency, Humboldt County will continue to reassess this policy as the public health emergency and law evolves. Humboldt County reserves the right to amend or revise this policy at any time.
And it's similar to some of the other counties around.
Correct, correct.
So we are...
No, this isn't something new, and that's the nice thing about all the different counties, everybody's sharing stuff, everybody's sending stuff out, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, so it's been a really good, it's been a good collaborative time, actually.
So I'd like to make the motion to accept the, um, infectious disease action of COVID nineteen.
I'll second it.
All right, Bruce, a second, any further discussion on that?
There's just one reading, right?
Here we go, all those in favor of adopting this?
Aye.
Anyone follow? Action plan, carry. Uh, moving on that way, uh, we have the acceptance place on file of court, uh, recorder's quarterly report, recorded as March thirty-one, twenty twenty, should have that in your packet as well.
I'm assuming being Diane isn't in here, that everything is up to order, and I would make a motion to accept her quarterly report.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? For the favor?
Aye.
Any follow-up? Uh, recording report gets passed. And, uh, speaking of quarterly reports, the, uh, sheriff's quarterly report, ended March, uh, as well, have that in our packet.
And likewise with the sheriff, I don't see anybody around, and I'm assuming that everything's on that, so I'd make a motion to accept his report.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold, most report passed.
Diane says, you know, he doesn't, this does.
Peggy, I've gotta ask, Peggy, I've gotta ask a protocol question. If you're there?
Yep.
Uh, my group is obviously going off the agenda, and, uh, we, are we bound to the times for Denise and Cindy, and are they gonna join by phone, is that what they're probably working on?
They're gonna join by phone, and if you would like me to see if I can get them to come on earlier, I could do that.
And then I know that Ben was going to do likewise for this, uh, this, uh, information.
Correct.
Say?
Correct.
But Don Reefer, he isn't coming, is he? Could we, could we do Don Reefer's business? The Brush and Weed Control? Isn't that right, Eric, Don?
Again, I have that information, I sent it to Peggy, uh, I'm not, I'm really with Zoom, but, but I, that look up a bit a little different, uh, I sure am very able to, uh, share this on the screen with everybody, but I don't have the option, the way this is set up at this point in time, could you show us the email information that I received from Don? But Peggy, I did send you, uh, that in an email, if everyone wants to take a look at it.
I do not have that, Eric.
You didn't get the email?
No.
Uh, I will be honest with you, I did just send it, so.
Okay, I'll go look at my email.
We, we got time, so we can take a peek, Peggy.
We got time, well, uh, yeah, I thought that I could've just pulled it off, but it showed up on my screen here, and everybody could take a look at it, safe paperwork, but I'm not getting that option to share, uh, from my computer like I normally would with Zoom.
Yeah, my, my Zoom meeting this morning with you was nothing like the ones I've had before.
Right, uh, so you're kind of familiar, I, you know, experimented with this, for lack of a better term, several times with several different people, and we were able to share information back and forth, uh, emails, uh, you have a whiteboard, you can almost do a, a complete presentation, uh, but this, this hookup isn't quite the same like you said, Rick.
So, as far as Don's stuff, nothing seems to be out of what he's quoted you, or quoted us, for the past? Eric planning on, and you, you made mention of which corner they're spraying?
No, and, uh, they just, they only really missed the, uh, actual locations of the drainage district, uh, obviously, it's the same protocol for many years, it's approximately a third of the district each year.
Right.
And so it's just following that same protocol, um, and Don, you know, they're, they're struggling even with their work, in, in my conversation with them, they're struggling with all this isolation and that, too, he's very appreciative, uh, avenues, they're going after working up a county, that it obviously is much closer to him, they're very concerned about travel, he doesn't want his, uh, crews going out and sail overnight anyplace, and so obviously, uh, in his conversation, uh, they're probably expecting to get this thing interfered with, this presently with COVID, uh, just because proximity is so close for a guy.
Sure do.
Did the price go up any, Eric?
Uh, it doesn't, it's doing a little increase on some of the chemicals, looking back, but, uh, mid-year increase maybe on the year-over-year application cost, but not, nothing further updates. And, you know, Don would say that he, he has stated in the quote that he will not exceed any of the numbers lifted, any of the prices lifted, and specifically, more often than not, they generally come in under their budget or their quote, rather. So I apologize, I, I could've said this sooner, she could've printed it in the packet, but,
She's got it done for us now, so.
Really don't have got to be able to share this on the screen.
Okay, everybody has a copy. Um, as far as Kent and Donovan, I will send you one by email so that you'll have it.
I'll respond if they, you told them that, being, they didn't respond, right?
They're pretty quiet.
They are quiet.
Yeah, Eric, it looks very similar to last year, it's just a little bit higher, which isn't much.
And obviously, I mean, without, going off the math and doing a whole bunch of calculations, it's approximately a third each year, and obviously, that's subject to the size of the district that they're treating as well.
Yeah, and then if he gets calls for bad areas, he will go and treat them elsewhere in the county if he has to, I know he's mentioned that, so. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the quote for Brush Control from Don Reefer, Brush and Weed.
I'll second.
I know Don...
Any further discussion on that?
Don's been doing a good job for us, I, we haven't had too many complaints from anyone, so I think evidently he's doing a decent job. I know our, our drainage ditches look good, you don't see hardly any brush going in them, and that's the big issue, 'cause when you get brush, trees, then you get...
You know, I was putting a foot on Don, kind of conscientious too, about doing this, uh, believing, you know, he always called in, I know he calls me, I, I, he likes people to know that they're out there, what they're doing, when they're doing it, uh, they do an excellent job taking care of that. So, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any follow-up? Uh, question, carry.
Eric, I can...
See, I will get, uh, two signed copies of that, I'll get one to you, just have them on file, and I usually get one back to Don as well, that that's what was accepted.
Okay. I see that, uh, Ben is on the line, Ben, can you hear us?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
That clear?
Is it okay to move you up to now?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. For, uh, I'm, uh, I'm not getting audio through my computer, it's, it's kinda...
You won't, Ken? You, you locked that up to go through the computer yet?
Oh, it did last week.
I'm gonna go for a back. I'll dial the dial dial as opposed to meeting anyway.
Okay, yeah, last, I guess last week I headed the other way, so, I was trying to, trying to do that, so I kept entering and leaving, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda today is to award the Fox Culver Project to Peterson Contractors, out of Rainback, Iowa. Uh, the projects are LC one-seven-zero-six-zero-four, uh, on Bates Avenue, just about a half a mile south of Highway three, and the other one is just south of the Gosh Park Bridge on Gosh Park Road. I believe I sent you guys all copies of, uh, bid tabs.
Yep.
Yeah.
We had, uh, we had six there, and, uh, I think we got a pretty good price on them, I mean, they were very competitive.
And PCI is the lowest, was it? Peterson's the lowest.
Yeah, Peterson Contract.
PCI, yeah.
Are you, are you here? You guys still there?
Yeah, we're here.
We're here.
We're just studying it.
Looking through the bids.
Okay, yep.
So the one on, um, six oh four, that is a little bit higher than what your projection was, and, and the one on, um, zero zero one was four thousand, roughly four thousand cheaper. Am I reading that right?
So, uh, the one that I did, it, it was, uh, about seventeen hundred dollars higher than what my estimate was, uh, and then Dave's was a bit cheaper.
Okay.
If you combine together, uh, for the tile project, we ended up paying about two thousand dollars less than of what our estimate together ended up being.
That's always nice when they're coming close to that.
Yeah, I mean, this is, usually our, our estimates are hopefully close to what we, what we get for bids, um, you know, it all just depends on how much work the contractor has lined up, and, and what our timetable for construction is, if the two things line up together, then, uh, you usually get a, a good quote.
So which one are they working on, are gonna start first, Ben?
Uh, that really depends on the supplier, which ones they have, uh, ready and available first.
I see. Well, I make a motion to accept...
The start date for these is until, uh, the middle of September.
Middle of September.
Yeah, but they can start early if they like.
Uh, I don't know, until we award, I'm not supposed to have any correspondence with them.
Oh, okay.
I'd make a motion to accept Ben's quote, or the quote from Peterson's for, uh, both, or do you want them separate? Do them both, then, for Peterson's, PCI, uh, Rainback.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Any further discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any follow-up? First approved.
The, uh, the next three items that I've got on the agenda are to approve applications to work in the counties right away, uh, these are all for, uh, tile installation, so the contractors, right now, they're, they're busy as can be, trying to give in and out. Um, two of the applications to work in the counties right away are to Jensen Tile and Drainage, or Drainage and Excavating. Uh, first one is to hook into an eight-inch tile in the counties right away at, uh, twenty-two-seventy-four Nevada Avenue. This would be that little, uh, modular home just east of the museum, uh, Gary needed to hook in a new line last Thursday, was it Eric? Where I talked to you.
Yeah, I think you're right, Ben, yeah.
Um, so he, for him to get that done, we, we approved it preemptively on Thursday with Eric and I, and then, uh, formally, uh, approved with the board today.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the working right away at, on Section Six of Beaver Township. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold, that one approved?
Okay, the second one is also to Jensen Drainage, uh, this is to run an additional tile line crossing the roadway, uh, for Mr. David Hunter Mark, uh, between Section Seventeen and Eighteen in Rutland Township. I've seen what they're trying to get done, uh, I'm waiting on the approval from the downstream property owner that Gary is tracking down, um, but once I have that, I, I have no problem with what they're trying to get done.
And they're crossing the gravel road.
Yes, they'll be, they'll be crossing the gravel road.
And Ben, I just wanted you to know, I don't have any copies for the board of the next three things that you were discussing, all we got was the first one.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Um, I don't have anything for the, any copies for the board of the next two applications in your quote for dump trucks.
Okay.
Usually you send us over copies, and then we share them with the board, I only got the one, the first one from Jensen, so they have nothing to look at, you can certainly describe it, but they have nothing to look at.
Which typically is just, uh, the cover sheet of the application to work in the county right away.
Yep, but I just wanted you to know that.
The, the, they're, they're looking at a private tile crossing that crosses, uh...
Hawaii? Is that crossing Hawaii?
Crosses Hawaii Avenue, uh, a mile west of Rutland, and a mile and a quarter north.
West and north, up by the old quarry?
Well, it's, yeah, it's east of there, I don't know.
It'd be up by, uh, Harlan Hanson's old house.
Right.
Yeah. All right, well...
Everything's in order on it, as far as you're concerned?
Everything's in order on it, as soon as I get, uh, the downstream property owner's signature to allow him to, uh, put this tile out in his field. Um, Dave needs an outlet, and to do it, he's gotta go through his neighbor's property, so obviously, we, we can't, uh, formally give him permission without the downstream property owner's signature on it. But, uh, he's totally on board, it's just tracking down the signature.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the application to work in the right away for Jensen Drainage, between Seventeen and Eighteen in Rutland Township, pending they get the signature of the downstream owner.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any follow-up? That one is approved, and we have one more effective D and M rating.
For this one, uh, you guys don't have a copy in front of, because Doug Marshall came in kinda in the eleventh hour on, I believe it was on Friday, uh, and he allowed me to, uh, amend the agenda to get him on. He has, uh, an tile that he's gotta put in over by, uh, Monty Bill's Dewey's house, which will be northeast of Humboldt, southeast of Silvermore, and, uh, to get a viable outlet, he's gotta hook into a, a, a drainage main that runs in the county right away. This will be on one-hundred-and-fifty-fifth, just west of U. Avenue.
Hey Ben, is, you say, is this a county main that he's hooking into?
Yeah, he's hooking into a county main.
Okay, is he draining any land that is not currently in the drainage district?
Uh, I've looked at the drainage district maps, and from the look of things, the area that he is running this tile is all part of that district, um...
DD seventy-four. Now he's, he's draining, if he's on one-hundred-and-fifty-fifth, he'd be draining Section Thirty-five, he'd be in DD seventy-four.
Yeah, so this is DD seventy-four and, uh, Section Thirty-five of Humboldt Township, um, I don't know how well you can see the drawing.
Yeah, we can.
But, uh, right there by Monty Bill's house, he's wanting to hook into Branch Two, hook DD seventy-four.
Yeah, I see there's a section of land there that isn't in any drainage district, and that was my concern.
That was what I wanted.
That if they're, you know, tiling land and dumping it into a drainage district that isn't currently in the district, it needs to be a...
Right, he's got about sixty acres around the house, it looks like it's part of the district.
Yeah. Uh, I had a request, we get a, a tiling map of that?
Okay.
After he does the project, we would, we require a tiling map showing the locations of the tiles, that we know they're not pulling water from out of the district into it without being part of the district.
That we know we need to bring in that part of the ground?
Yeah. So...
So...
I'd make a motion to approve that.
With that stipulation?
With that stipulation, that you get a, a copy of the tiling map that they, the land that they tiled.
Are you fine with that after, or would you like that before?
After is fine, because we can bring them in after we have the proof that they tiled it.
Okay.
I'll second that motion, you made a motion, didn't you? Yes. I'll second that motion.
All right, Ben, the proposed in the second, any further discussion with that stipulation? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hold, correct, Brad.
Give that, Tricia head.
The, uh, last item on the agenda, uh, is one that I sent to you guys, I guess, by text message, with a copy of the, uh, the truck quote, so we had, we had, uh, five quotes, one of them by Don's truck, and then four of them from Reeve. Don's truck was the low quote at three oh nine, three hundred and nine thousand dollars, zero cents.
That's your two truck?
Had four quotes with their cheapest option being the M-Drive transmission versus an Allison and snow equipment put on by Highway Truck in, in Fort Dodge. And that was fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars higher than Don's truck. I ruffled with this back and forth most of the weekend. Uh, I dug out records of the freight liners that we've got from twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen, and the ones that we got in twenty eighteen here. Well, really, I can't justify spending another twenty-five thousand dollars a truck to buy local and buy a piece. I do know that they are quoting us a larger engine, that's the eleven-seater engine versus the nine-seater Cummins in the, the freight liners. But, um, you know, our, our most expensive freight liner that we've got is, is the twenty thirteen that we've spent, uh, about eighty-seven dollars, eighty-seven hundred dollars in repairs on. Otherwise, in the eighteens, we've had over there to get work done, but it's all been, uh, warranty issues. One was a rechipping on, on the Allison transmission. One was a, a steel warranty on the large hydraulic push arm, the race box. And, and then we did have one truck, uh, Tom's truck, berated due to an issue with the, uh, depth pump. And that one, we had to tow it over, but it was still warranted. You know, I, I, I like Reese, uh, I like their salesmen. But twenty-five thousand a truck is a lot to follow.
But it's a bigger engine and, uh, heavier transmission, isn't it?
Bigger engine. Uh, the M-Drive is max version of a, uh, automatic transmission. They do offer the Allison transmission, but it adds another five grand to the quote.
Is that smaller engine gonna handle that? Cause didn't we have a conversation over this a couple of years ago?
We did, um, the, the freight liners, uh, it's the, the L-nine Cummins engine is the, the same engine that we've been running in the twenty thirteen trucks. They, they've been handling it pretty well. And we don't have the, the high-dill country, um, of, of eastern Iowa. But, you know, I mean, bigger engine's gonna, gonna push snow easier. You know, you can't deny that.
Yeah. Say, Ben, this is Rick. Uh, I like your thought about the money because times are pretty tight right now. Uh, and if the freight liners have been doing the job for us, sure, if we're flush with money, I'd like to go with Reese, but I think we gotta watch our dollars close these days.
What about, have you, does O'Hallan down there? Did, did we get any quotes from them? And I'm not trying to jump ship in the middle of the, but the internationals, do they have anything?
Uh, from what I understand, nobody likes the internationals. Uh, West County won't even quote them anymore because of all the issues that they've had with them. So, no, we, we didn't, we didn't get quotes from, from, uh, O'Haller.
Well, before somebody makes a motion, I'm gonna make one more statement about, I'm still in belief that, you know, we spend a hundred and, or three hundred and nine thousand, so I'm assuming they're a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and fifty-two apiece for two, right?
Yep.
So, I guess my, my statement I've made since I got onto the board was I still believe that, that we can figure out a way to haul rock cheaper than running a hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar truck up and down the road. And my belief is, is I still think we should look into a semi with a, uh, belly dump that we could haul all of our rock and sand, the majority of it, and, uh, take some of the pressure off these trucks.
Not worry about-
Not wear them out as often as, you know, and I know if we bought these two right now, what, what's the projection on, would we need more next year, or is it two years out, or where are we at with, when we buy some more?
I, I'd be a few years out, um. So if we, if we buy these two, our oldest sleeps are twenty-seven, or two thousand seven. I, I don't have the mileage on them right now, since I'm not here today. But, uh, you know, if we buy these two, I'd be another year, two to three years before I start thinking about buying another dump.
Well, I went over this morning early, so I was sitting there looking at the current, uh, truck trader book, just buying a truck, a semi, you can buy a ca, uh, the tractor pretty reasonable. I mean, something with two to three hundred thousand miles on it.
Yeah, a used one.
And you, and I, I was looking basically for a belly dump. I think we could do something with a, with a tractor and a belly dump and probably have seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand in it and have a truck that has two hundred and fifty thousand miles, maybe, maybe less. And be able to haul that rock and sand and have one or, one guy do it for each shop. And that way you aren't having fourteen different people jumping through the seat. But that's my, I still believe we're wearing our trucks out, chasing them up and down the gravel roads, and that's my opinion, so.
I know they've talked about that at, at meetings, different counties, they've already started doing that, and it's worked really well for them to do the semi and the belly dump.
Just, just the amount of difference that you're hauling versus, uh, two and a half loads versus two and a half trucks running. So that's my opinion, so.
Have you looked into that at all, Ben?
How many minutes can you haul on a, on a belly dump, please?
I'm guessing, Ben, you'd probably be pushing depending on how you, weight-wise, if you went to the ninety thousand with, if you had a triple axle, um, I'm guessing you'd be pushing, uh, thirty ton pretty easy.
Okay, yeah.
And if you wanted to, got another axle on your tractor, you can go to ninety-six.
Uh, thirteen, thirteen and a half tons of, per dump truck.
Right.
You know, I, I know we've talked about possibility of, of getting a, a semi, and I mentioned it during budget time for next fiscal year as an option, um.
Yeah, but we don't wanna look, and pardon my French, but we don't wanna look at a brand-new one.
Rock, I mean-
Hundred and fifty grand.
Uh, these British box mover jobs, we move snow, press sand in the winter time. I mean, these are multi-use pieces of equipment.
Yeah, the trucks are way more versatile.
I think that there is, uh, a use and a, and a need for, for a semi down the road.
I, I, I like the fact of a semi because it frees up another man, too. So people wouldn't, you know, now we got all these guys hauling rock, we could get by with half as many people hauling rock or a fourth as many people hauling rock to stockpile. And, uh-
Yeah, the stockpiles were built, we built those this, uh, this winter, uh, in between snowstorms. And so, which if you had a belly dump, you wouldn't be stockpiling. You'd need a side dump for that.
No.
But, uh, a belly dump, especially with the, uh, the sideways spreader that they've got available right now, you'd be able to spread on the road just as much, just the same as you do with these dump trucks.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, if they kick one of them old dump trucks, pull the box and everything off of it and put a fifty-ton load.
You could be too, depending on what the miles and stuff are, right, power-wise.
Can I just interject for a second? Denise has been on the phone since about four to nine.
Yeah, well, getting back to the matter of the point, uh, I think it's great discussion, everybody. I, I really appreciate it, uh, especially on the, uh, on the semi. Thank, thank, we definitely need to look into it. Uh, I have a question back to the dump truck for Ben. In your knowledge, recently adding Mack truck, or that truck?
No, no, from my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had a Mack truck.
Okay. And I want to tell Ben, too, I appreciate his, considering with some of the maintenance things on these freight liners. Uh, I recall earlier discussion on purchase of dump trucks. I'm not exactly sure where the Don's truck service is located. Yep, I, I knew it was over east someplace, and the Mack, uh, truck place is in Fort Dodge.
If you don't have a side deck, or you can-
I'm not gonna, you know, you sometimes you feel what you paid for it. I know, I appreciate everybody's comments, and Rick saying this is a great time with excess money, all things considered. But, uh, I think it's something I gotta keep in mind moving down the road, that, uh, maybe the Mack, over time, might be a little bit, uh, the cost effective versus the freight liners that you have to go a distance to get repaired and they keep their elements, maybe a little few more problems, so that's my thought.
Eric?
Yeah?
Can we table this till next minute of meeting, so we can have a little more discussion on these trucks?
Yeah, will you be on the gun on any of this?
I'll, I'll second that.
We can table it for a week, that's fine.
Okay.
I agree with Dave.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion to table.
Hey, we're gonna table this for at least a week. I always agree with that.
Aye, aye.
All right, yeah, so we've got just more to, uh, getting back to Peggy and Denise, I think we should be fair with her. And I hope we're aligned to, uh, Denise with the help of her for your information.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Does anyone have a copy of the present?
We do.
Yes.
Your voice is very low, Denise. Can you speak up?
Get hold of that.
That's right.
There you're better.
Okay. So, in front of you, you should have the Humboldt County seven twenty twenty regul. I'm going to walk through this in its entirety and then we'll, um, end up back on the decision relative to the regul increase. And hopefully we can, um, either come to a decision today with regards to your regul rate for seven one twenty twenty, or I can go back to the drawing board and come up with some other solution. So this first page, which is page two of the presentation, indicates that we are per se at thirty-six entities within IGHCP and serving just under nine thousand members. Now, we do have sixty-four gods entering into IGHCP as such as seven one, so they're not included in these numbers. And Hardin County also enters into IGHCP seven one, also not in these numbers. So we're continuing to grow to provide partial self-funding to be all those various plan designs throughout the state of Iowa. We offer lower administration fees through our Walmart products, and we're controlling the rate growth over time through our polling. This chart is important because it indicates how IGHCP is done relative to cost in comparison to Walmart's trend and the reguls that Walmart delivers to IGHCP year over year. So if you follow this, you'll see the purple off-line here that starts two thousand and six at eleven percent, and then you can see that kinda go up and down through time till you get to twenty nineteen. The next line is the turquoise line, which is Walmart's renewal. This is the renewal that Walmart has delivered to IGHCP each of those years. And then most important, and the lowest line on this graph, is indicative of the regul that we IGHCP actually took from Walmart each year out the door on average. So if you look at Walmart's highest friend's time, or excuse me, their highest, uh, regul, this is two thousand and eighteen. We did have high claims that year. We also had some other things being implemented with health and care reform. So our renewal received was fifteen point eight percent, the highest regul we've ever experienced with IGHCP. In that same year, Walmart's trend was eight percent. So where we ended, after we did our regul negotiations, we redesigned some plans and applied partial self-fund, the average regul out the door for IGHCP was just two percent, two point zero five percent. So what we're doing underneath this Walmart plan is very important and is continuing to be successful. So if you look, oh, excuse me, um, so on this next page, page four, this also describes the, the single biggest reason that any group is inside of IGHCP and stays in IGHCP. And that's the single group volatility that any one group, I don't care if you're the largest group or the smallest group within the trust, the group, uh, single group volatility relative to claims that anybody would experience on their own. So this is tracking six entities from two thousand and eleven through two thousand and twenty. And the idea here is to show you that every group is gonna have good years and bad years. Our target loss ratios is in the low nineties. Okay, so the low nineties is where I want each of you to be relative to your claims versus your premiums. If you look at this orange line, the S, or excuse me, edit E, you can see the volatility of this group. They've run very well. This, this particular group has had very good loss ratios below what we would expect. But then in, um, in the nineteen nineteen, about halfway through their, uh, last quarter, they had a premium rate, and that, that was a two-million-dollar claim, which took their loss ratio to two hundred and thirty-two percent. This group on their own would have received a forty-five percent, uh, premium increase in their next plan year because their claims are just out of control. But because they're part of IGHCP, they received the same regul percent increase that everybody else did, and the impact of that two-million-dollar claim was insignificant to the trust because our premiums are so large, we have enough, uh, people to spread this risk that it, it didn't impact us, um, to any notable degree. Okay, wrapping up the trust level information, this is claims and premium by month for the entire trust, each of them on through twenty nineteen. So you can see we average three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven employees participating in the program. If you add their dependents and spouses, that's eight thousand two hundred and sixty. Our claims were just over forty-three million, as was our premiums, so our loss ratio is just under a hundred percent. Higher than where I need it to be. So we're working on that, and we're actually have gotten on the right side of claims with some of the measures we've taken over the last couple of years. So, uh, our loss ratios are coming down and getting in more in line with where I would expect that. Okay, now we're gonna start looking at this data as it relates to Humboldt County. So, page six, this snapshot of what your costs have been like since entering IGHCP. So you can see the year that you entered, which was two thousand and five, the cost to come in was a zero point four zero percent over what you were doing on your own. So really, there was no change in premium in that first year. The average increase in your insurance premium, this is at the Walmart level, so the money that's leaving Humboldt County going to Des Moines, and you, there's no way to get it back. The average increase each year, year over year, is two point seven two percent, so very low. If you add in your partial self-funds and all fees that you pay and that are associated with your health insurance, your average increase year over year is three point one zero percent. I'm sorry, that's in your partial self-fund, is three percent. Your total cost increase, this is all, is everything combined, is two point nine five percent, so just under three percent. And your reserve balance through the end of nineteen plan year was three hundred and eleven, five eighty-two. So pretty powerful information here. If you look at the, uh, this gray section, this is the change in causes, the actual renewal that Humboldt County has taken each of the years with IGHCP. So on average, your plans, your employees has only increased two point nine five percent, um, for fifteen, you know, year over year for fifteen years. And, and you've built a very healthy reserve on top of that. So how have you guys done? So your own loss ratios inside the trust, you had a very good claim year this year. Uh, your loss ratio is just sixty-five percent. Uh, your loss ratio is just sixty-five percent, so you are, um, you had a very, very successful plan year with Wellmark. Remember, I said your target is in the low nineties, so sixty-five is stellar.
We're a bunch of hell.
Your partial self-fund utilization is also doing well.
That little group is not working, yeah.
If you look at the money we've received from Jan- from July through to January, we've received thirty-two thousand nine thirty-four to pay claims. We've paid fifty-six thousand four thirty-five for a deficit of twenty-three thousand. This deficit in this year and in these prior years was done with intention. Okay, so those, those negative numbers aren't, um, aren't bad. We, we did this with intention, we want to, uh, leverage the partial self-fund reserve balance to offset your renewal cost. So, before we put in, um, these PSS funds received, is the amount of new money that's going into your plan to pay claims. And this difference, for example, last year, you had a deficit of thirty-four thousand seven oh nine. That difference was pulled out of your reserve balance to bring that, bring that number down. Page nine is a list of high-cost claimants from Humboldt County. So, these are individuals that are covered under your plan that have had, uh, single diagnosis where claims have been paid in excess of ten thousand dollars for a single diagnosis. So, these are the claims that we manage to watch very closely. So, in order to read this report, you need to understand that four columns in where it says R E L in blue indicates employee, if it's an E, and S would be a spouse. You don't have any Cs, but a D would be indicative of a dependent child. So, the importance of this is just to understand and know where your, your claims dollars are going as it relates to drug diseases and high-cost claims. Your number one, um, claimant is an employee, E between the ages of twenty to thirty-four. They are actively on your plan and being treated for, uh, arthritis, agreement for arthritis. Okay? So, this next page is a screenshot of your receipt to disbursement report. This is received by the auditor's office each month from our accounting department. And it tracks the money that we've collected via our consolidated billlet, and then how we've dispersed of those money. The bottom left corner, you can see your claims account balance. You currently have two hundred and seventy-five thousand five oh five in your claims account to, to pay your self-funded claims. Okay, next, here's your medical benefit overview. Nothing is, um, is painting in the upcoming year relative to plan design unless, uh, as requested by you. The only, uh, item I guess that is being enhanced, and this was voted on by the IDHCP board at our meeting in February, is the doctors on demand. If you go about halfway, just a little over halfway down the page, you'll see doctors on demand, and it now shows a zero-dollar copayment. That has, uh, historically been ten dollars, so for your employees to access telemedicine, the cost to them for that time of service, that visit over the telephone, was ten dollars. We are changing that to ten, uh, zero dollars effective July one. Now, with that said, I would add one caveat, and that is that due to, uh, the coronavirus, Wellmark has waived telemedicine costs for all members through June sixteen. That's possible, that's gonna get extended, um, but right now, it's waived for all members regardless of the IDHCP decision to do this. So, it's zero-dollar cost effective right now. So, because of the coronavirus, our July first zero-dollar copay cost, this is moved, was moved back. There won't be a gap, so if Wellmark does stop doing it at zero dollars for all other members on, so, June sixth, that's predicted, it's not gonna shut off for Humboldt County. So, right now, through infinity, it's a zero-dollar copay. The zero-dollar cost for doctors of telemedicine for all your employees and the dependents covered under the plan. Okay, now the renewal. So, remember, when IDHCP gets a renewal, that renewal is consistent to all members covered under IDHCP. So, this is the renewal, if Humboldt County were to renew as is, and not leverage your partial self-fund. This is not what I recommend, but I'm gonna walk through this so you can see apples-to-apples comparison with your current cost and the IDHCP renewal. If you look at the top section, the very first line item that makes up your total cost is the Wellmark premium. That Wellmark premium is six hundred and twenty-five dollars for a single, and fifteen sixty-four for a family. If I apply, the Wellmark renewal is nine point eight nine percent. So, that number, six twenty-five, and fifteen sixty-four, that becomes six eighty-seven. Down below in red is the, in the bottom section, Wellmark premium has changed to six eighty-seven and seventeen nineteen, leaving all other costs the same. That would produce a renewal percentage of nine point two one percent. Instead, what I'd like to see you do is continue to leverage your partial self-fund reserve and take a little less of a renewal. Your claims are performing well, as is your partial self-fund. And with the healthy reserve balance, we could increase, or we could decrease the amount of new money being, um, put into your plan. So, to get to a eight percent renewal, this is what I've done. I've taken that same Wellmark premium from the top, your current Wellmark premium is six twenty-five on a single contract. I'm increasing that by eight point nine eight percent to get to those same Wellmark premiums. We can't control that. All the negotiation with Wellmark relative to those numbers has been done. This is where we ended, so that number ha- has to be six eighty-seven and seventeen nineteen. Where we do have, uh, room to set your rates with your partial self-funding, so we would reduce that forty-two fifty from above, where it says partial self-fund claims funding under the single contract is currently forty-two fifty. I suggest block it max to thirty-five twenty. Likewise, on the family contract, if today is a seventy-six, drop that to fifty-five twenty. All other premium factors remain the same. I move to a V, that produces an eight percent renewal per, uh, increase. It still puts forty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars into your reserve of new money. You're using about a hundred and twenty thousand or so a year, so you're gonna, you're, we're still gonna collect forty-two thousand, and then that other seventy thousand, um, or so will just come out of that reserve balance.
So, our reserve would go down from, gotta go back a few pages.
Two, two seventy-five or something like that.
Was that, was that right?
Currently, it's two seventy-five.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna drop about eighty thousand.
Yeah, two hundred.
To below two hundred.
Is that a safe level?
Yeah, yep. What did you guys budget?
The nine percent.
Okay. So, I have a nine point two one option for you here, and I have an eight percent option. You, I mean, if you wanna go with your budget number of nine percent, and then we'll put in a little more money in your partial self-fund, more than the forty-two thousand, it's gonna be, it's gonna be closer to that fifty-six thousand. If I had to guess, it's probably gonna be around fifty-four, fifty-three thousand. Uh, if you take a flat nine, you could do that as well.
Denise, this is Sandy, is there a reason why, um, we just do single and the family and not do like employee plus one?
All of the Wellmark plans are delivered with just a single and a family. I have the option at the Wellmark level for additional tiers. If you wanted to have additional tiers, the total costs are, it's gonna be the same. So, my, so for example, if Wellmark needs to collect, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars, um, for your health insurance premium, they're gonna collect three hundred thousand dollars whether they divide that up in four, employee, employee spouse, employee child, and family, or they just collect it all in one premium. So, at the end of the day, the costs are the same. What they do is they, um, they decrease the single premium a little bit, and they increase the family premium to make room for those other two tiers. So, um, likely, the employee spouse premium would be very close to the family. The employee child would be, would be close to the single.
Okay.
So, if you recall on page eight, that's your PSS claims day history. So, you can see, for example, like, let's just go back to twenty sixteen. You used a hundred and fourteen thousand, you had a high year last, the year twenty seventeen of one forty-four. So, last year was one twenty-three. Seven months of your plan year, you're at fifty-six thousand now. So, I would say you're running on average of about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, if you're gonna put, if you took the eight percent renewal, you're gonna put forty-two thousand of that one twenty into the plan, and the deficit will be pulled out of that reserve balance. So, I, the whole idea is, is, I mean, you wanna have a healthy reserve, and I would, I watch your claims account balance closely. I'm not gonna let that get too low. Um, and if it starts to get low, we're gonna, we're gonna use more money into it at renewal. Uh, we, you know, you wanna have a solid five months probably of money sitting in there so that if you ever left IDHCP, or you ever left self-fund, partial self-funding, get money to cover those claims. But, um, so the whole idea of building a, a claims account balance is to offset your renewal. So, for times like this where we had a renewal that was a little higher than what we were anticipating at nine point two one, so that's a perfect opportunity for you to leverage a little bit of that reserve and maybe take the nine percent that you budgeted. Or there's an eight percent option as well.
So, if we did have a catastrophic event, then what we had, if we went with the eight percent, we would still have enough in our self-funding to be okay?
Yeah, because you're only, um, you're only on the hook for claims that fall between five thousand dollars and fifteen hundred. So, once any claim hits five thousand dollars, Wellmark's gonna pay that claim at a hundred percent. I, I'm sorry, let's look at the, let's look at the out-of-pocket, that's gonna be more real.
Okay.
So, your out-of-pocket maximum that you're purchasing from Wellmark is seventy-three fifty. So, your employee's gonna pay the first fifteen hundred because that's their out-of-pocket maximum. And then Wellmark's gonna pay everything above seventy-three fifty, the code pays in between. Say that if you had a catastrophic claim, if you had that million dollar claim, yours, Wellmark picks that claim up at seventy-three fifty and pays, pays it at a hundred percent.
If you get in trouble, there'd be a lot of people who'd have to pay the, you know...
The deductible, up, up to the out-of-pocket net.
Yeah, but if you have a lot of claims, that's where it eats away at your self-fund.
Self-fund, okay. Now, I understand it.
So, we're either looking at eight percent or go with the nine that we put into the budget?
Well, we could save a little on the budget if we did the eight percent, and if we've got plenty in the reserve.
Yeah.
And typically, typically, we don't have these spikes two years in a row. Is that right, Sandy?
I agree.
I was just looking at past history, and, you know, there's kinda like little ups and downs, never kind of up, up.
Yeah, if you look at your history, so last year, you took a four percent renewal. Your prior was eighty-three seven. So, the, the largest renewal you've ever taken with IDHCP was back in two thousand and ten, and that was eight percent. Otherwise, you've taken several zeros. Um, that, yeah, renewal history's on the six. If you turn back to page six, and you look at the gray area that just changes total cost, that's the actual renewal that Humboldt County has, has taken each year, uh, to serve with IDHCP.
And then following year after that, eight percent dipped three point two seven, so really, you only had a five percent, if you look at it.
Maybe combine the two.
You combine the two. You gotta look at that, too.
Okay, that's basically our choice, is go with nine or eight.
Mm-hmm.
With the COVID stuff, everything, we don't know what's gonna get thrown extra into our budget.
Yeah.
We might, I mean, I know one percent maybe not, might not seem like that much, but it might be enough to kinda help ease other things along the way.
So, we used to think it'd stay at the nine?
No, I was thinking stay, go to the eight, save one percent.
Save the one percent.
One percent on the budget, so.
Yeah.
The budget, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, 'cause we just don't know what the...
Yeah, I know, it's what a crazy year we're looking at.
Yeah, we don't know what might happen. And if we have to in the next year, maybe, maybe not, like she said, then, then we don't take so much out of the self-funding, or the, the fund, whatever you call it.
Do we need to give her that answer today?
Yeah, she'd like it today, I'm sure.
So, do we just need to make a motion?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to go with the eight percent for the renewal.
I'll second it.
What was that, Sandy? Can, can you give me that percentage again, I just, better if I could hear it.
I made the motion to go with eight percent for the renewal.
And I seconded it.
That's what I thought, but I just, yeah. You gotta yell louder like me, better if I could hear it, but, uh, okay, I respect it of that?
Yes.
At eight percent, and very further discussion on that. Hearing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, eight percent it is.
Thank you. So, that's your renewal, um, to page fourteen, the life insurance overview. Uh, it indicates that your life insurance benefit will create a, for your upcoming plan year, so all stays the same there. And then the last page is just a, uh, just a, a list at our current membership. Uh, again, the count, the, on the county side, Hardin County is now part of our group, effective seven one. And the City of Fort Dodge is also part of our group, it's not shown on this page. Otherwise, this is a list of our current entities that are participating in our twenty-eighty agreement.
I have a question on that. At what point, is there a point where you guys are gonna stop taking counties and towns in? I mean, uh, will it get too big?
I don't anticipate that. I do, however, have the, uh, authority to deny entry into our, into our twenty-eighty. Um, I haven't had to do that a lot, but there have been a few groups that have wanted to enter where I've done their claims assessment, and it would hurt the rest of the membership. So, I selective on who I let come into the group.
So, you do research on it?
Yes, yeah, they do.
Oh, yes, I do, I do significant research.
Awesome.
Before letting anybody in.
I think by having, uh, Fort Dodge and Hardin County, it dropped their average age by a half a year.
Oh, that's good. You wanna lower, lowering your age, the better.
Cities do have, tend to have a lower, uh, demographic than the counties do. So, adding, adding, works like that is helpful. But also, just by virtue of bringing new groups in on a regular basis, healthy groups, that helps our loss ratio, because when a group comes in, let's say group comes in in July, right, like Fort Dodge and Hardin, we're gonna start collecting their premium in July, August, September, October. But we, so we're gonna collect their premium immediately, but it takes about four months before those claims start to hit our trust, right? So, if we have four months of pure profit, and they come in in July, Wellmark cuts off our claims in October to calculate our premium, that really offsets our loss ratio in a very positive way, gives me a lot of power when I go to negotiate that renewal. So, steady growth is key.
Okay.
And we hope we don't have any of those two million dollar, yeah, hits too often.
That was an anomaly, for sure.
Well...
At least they had it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm glad they were with us and not on their own.
I was going to say, if that was, if you'd have taken that hit, you'd have recovered.
No.
At no way, no way. Take years to recover.
Well, we appreciate all your hard work.
Yep.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. Is there anything else for Denise, and she's so kind to, you were doing a meeting with us?
Rick didn't cause any problems down there, did he?
Oh, no. He never does.
You don't need to lie.
He smiled, so I'm not sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Bye.
All right, we're done. Put it in my last year, we're down to committee reports. All right, gentlemen?
I had nothing for meeting wise.
I didn't have any official meeting, I just had some business with the landfill down over the phone.
On Monday, I, the 30th, I had a phone call with someone with concerns on the DD-88 drainage. So I told her about the hearing that's going to be coming up, and that she can participate on Zoom, and I'll get Peggy her information so she can send that out to her. Also, that day, we had a NACO conference call for COVID-19. They're doing a really good job of keeping everybody informed, you know, different things to look for.
I appreciate you hanging on all those phone calls and listening, because...
I, all those emails that we get, my gorg.
Yeah, yeah, there's, it gets, I mean, I'll tell you, it's...
It's repetitive.
Right, it is repetitive from what we hear on the news, you know, and everything, but every once in a while, they'll say something that I didn't, I didn't hear on the news or something like that. The White House ones are really good. On April 1st, was a White House conference call. Dr. Foshee was on there, which I think it's really cool that they actually put on people...
People you see.
Yeah, you know, you really get it firsthand, and he's just really emphasizing that we've got to get the younger generation on board. They're the ones that seem to be out and about and not think, taking it as serious, and that's what we need to, you know, he even made so far as to say that, you know, we're going to, if it gets to it, we're going to have to start enforcing this if they will not stay where they need to be. And, you know, he, he called on us as county leaders to make sure that we're doing our part to talk about it whenever we, we can talk about it, to get, try to get things on the news. He made the recommendation of our, oh my gosh, my mind just went blank, but like our celebrities, our current celebrities, you know, see if they wouldn't do a phone interview or something like that, and, and to encourage people to get people to, to do that, you know, get it in their papers, get it in the radio station. Did you guys hear that? But it was every, they usually have on these calls, like, oh, usually about five to six different speakers. The week before it was the Surgeon General, so it was really good. And that's it, that's all I had.
I've been listening to some of them, too.
They're interesting.
They're interesting. I try to catch the governor's speech every day, or every other day. Monday, the 30th, I had a VA meeting in Humboldt, approved drain, claims, and our claims are down. Then on Tuesday, Wednesday, the 1st, I went out and looked some drainage over up on 180th and State Street. And we get the whole intersection flooded, fields on both sides, on the east side of the road. And we've got a tile sitting there, and water standing about that deep on it, on both of them, one on this side, one on that side. So, other than that, I didn't have anything else.
I didn't, I did go up and look at the bridge project up on Virginia, I think it is.
Hey, Rick?
Yeah?
Are you talking about the replacement of the pony trust bridge thing?
Yeah, that pony trust up there. They, they've been working on getting the embuppments out. The one in the south was probably 90% gone, and I guess they, I don't think they worked at all last week. I kind of wonder if they're not bringing in something bigger, because they had a heck of a time getting that cement out. It's just pretty healthy, healthy country.
Committee report, why did I not have any official extra meetings this past week? What is that, Sandy? Do you have anything else that you have for us?
No, I do not.
Okay. And you just mentioned that we talked, that maybe we could get a little different format on Zoom meetings moving forward with computer audio versus the phone?
Yes, I'll have them change that.
Okay, awesome, awesome. I don't know, does anybody have anything else past all the good discussion we've had today?
Reminder to just make sure you check on your neighbors.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All others in favor?
Aye.
Both? We are adjourned.